The Commissioners Court of Brazos County will be in regular session on May 21st, 2024, 10:00 AM, Commissioners' Courtroom, County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is invocation and pledge allegiance to the U.S. and Texas flag. Commissioner Aldrich for the lead.
Almighty, eternal, ancient of days, you who give us everything, you who are the creator of everything, we acknowledge you and we thank you and we are humbled in your mighty presence. Ask that you give us today the wisdom to act on behalf of the citizens of Brazos County. Ask for your protection and guidance and support for those who defend our freedoms and our liberty here in this great country, in this great state, and in Brazos County. Our first responders, our teachers, our healthcare providers, those who have the calling to make our quality of life what it is. We thank you for them and we ask your blessings upon them. All these things I ask in your most almighty and precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the U.S. and Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Second item on the agenda is call for citizens input and our concerns. Ned C. Young.
I wasn't hoping to be here today. We've had something come up in our neighborhood area that on 4/25, a sign was posted requesting a piece of property that had recently sold be allowed a TABC alcohol mixed beverage license. That sign was posted and we went ahead and looked to see what we could find out about who this was, what this was, what was the plan. Well, initially, nothing was there to really be found. We found out who had bought the property. We found out the names of people that were trying to go ahead and put in something. It was listed as entertainment. If you've never been down Jones Road, I've lived there for about 40 years now, and it started out when we moved out there, just a dirt gravel road. It's not got shoulders to speak of. More recently, in the past, I don't know, maybe 15 years, they've done that chip and tar seal that a lot of the county roads got so they didn't have to come through and grade it regularly. And there's also been a business park that arrived down on the end nearest Highway 60. So we've had a gain of a lot of traffic. Initially, the county had planned to upgrade Jones Road, but then A&amp;M did their Highway 47, so all of that got put on hold years back. And at the time, Jones Road, as you're coming from Highway 60 towards Villa Maria, has a very big curve with a pond right there, a frat house right at the end of that curve that I have been told, and I don't know, was illegally built, but at any rate, so we contend with them from time to time, and they're fun. But now, this is just after that pond, to the right-hand side, within 300 feet of multiple houses on both sides of the road, they're wanting to place this. On May 17th, they actually filed with Brazos County to have this business there. We also, on May 17th, went ahead and received in our mailboxes, without any stamps or postage or anything, a letter specifying that they had an intent to put in a bar there, that they were applying for a bar license to go up in that location. And they're calling it Six Strings Music and something. Six Strings Music and something, an event center or something. Within this area are very stable homesteads. These are mostly on acreage because we don't have city sewer, so everybody has their own septic system. Brushy water does service us, but there are many homes hidden in the woods in this area. If you were to look at an aerial map, you'd be surprised how many homes because they're not obvious from the street. Our concerns are huge that on this two-lane, unlit, narrow piece of road that you place a bar, now we're just going to have all sorts of wonderful noise late at night.
All right. Thank you for coming in. You probably know that we're not able to respond in the public sector. It's illegal for us to do that, so, but thank you for coming in and addressing that.
Judge, can I ask a question for clarification? I was trying to follow and I pulled up maps to look at the aerial.
Why don't you do that afterwards?
Okay. Let me find out what the specific address is. Okay. Thank you.
Cindy Wiley.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I just wanted to bring to the attention to the audience, the public that's watching and to you guys, but you might already be aware of this. Our governor has sent a letter to the president regarding our National Guard. Apparently Biden wants to usurp our governor's authority in controlling our National Guard, and he wants to have the ability to transfer our National Guard at his whim. And there is a letter that's posted May 3rd from our governor to President Biden asking him not to do that. Also, I wanted to make the public aware that nowhere in our, in any county clerk, election administrators, or secretary of states is it authorized that they have to verify the veracity of citizenship for a registered voter. There are pamphlets being distributed at the border encouraging everyone that crosses to vote for Biden. So this is a problem. I ask the citizens to get engaged. We will have many illegals on the voter registration rolls. There are avenues that you can become involved in to do a legal route of challenging voters. And so we're asking the public to please be aware that this is, this is about to go down for November 2024. Also, Texas apparently is a hotbed for establishing camps that housed unaccompanied minors. I was totally unaware of this, but apparently Joe Biden has created the largest child trafficking ring in U.S. history. Senator Grassley has, he's, he's got an article out through Just the News talking about whistleblowers are coming forward, including contractor records showing children were sponsored without proper vetting to care and to address, and at addresses that may be part of possible child smuggling or trafficking rings. I ask the people again, Voices for Children, they will train you to be a CASA. I was a former CASA. I have a personal story that I wanted to share. So I was a CASA for like almost three years. The last two teenagers that I had that I was working with, one, they moved to Austin, and, and the other one was still here in Bryan. And we, both parents' rights have been terminated. I wanted to adopt her, and when I expressed that to CPS, they like freaked out. They're like, oh my God, we can't have CASAs, you know, adopting the children that they're supposed to be advocates for. So I backed out of CASA. I was just so discouraged with the broken system that exists. So two years have gone by, I've done no CASA work. My CASA child, the youngest one that I wanted to adopt, she was taken to Austin, put into a family home with a male and a female. She contacts me about two and a half, three weeks ago and asked me, and I'm gonna try not to cry, if I would please consider taking care of her. It's not working out where she's at. Now, I'm not CASA. I have no say in what goes on with her. But fortunately, I mean, we've gone through six caseworkers when I was on the case. Now we are working for her to be removed out of the Austin family and come and live with me. So I'm gonna go through the training. I've already been to it, but I'll do it again. And when I asked her why she's doing remote learning, can I finish my sentence?
Finish your sentence.
Okay. While she was doing remote learning, she said because she didn't want to go to school because her clothes were dirty. Apparently the family she's with doesn't know how to wash the clothes.
All right. Thank you for sharing.
Yeah.
And that was all that signed up. So we will consider and take action on Agenda Items 3 through 20. Number 3 is selection of public members and alternates to serve on the Brazos County Salary Grievance Committee for calendar year 2024 pursuant to Section 152.015 Texas Local Government Monica Duncan. Lance Williams. Lisa Colmas. Rick Anderson. Michelle Linder. Matthew Nero. James Shelton. Hayden Roberts. Patricio Castro. Robert Casey. Gregory Bloomfield. Christopher Peoples. Jennifer Cochran. Tanya Guillotine Johnson. Kevin Dong. Debbie Watkins. Matthew Brown. Ruben Ruda. Kanta Sharma. Liliana Foster. Amanda Dotson. Barbara Shook. Alfred Burton. Lisa Anthony. Christina Fox. Alexis Fitchell. Darrell Kelly. Ginny Decker. Tyra Watts. Kimber Catalina. Vance Castillo. Ben Mayo. Joshua Coe Conover. Jackson Lee. Garhead White. Lisa Hernandez.
I have a question.
Okay.
How were those names selected?
Grand jury, I think.
Pardon me?
Grand jury. Those came off grand jury.
All of those people will be on the committee?
No, they'll, but you need them.
Can you explain the process?
I think there's nine that get on the committee, and then, but they get picked from that in that order, but if somebody can't serve, you go to the next one.
Okay.
And what we've run into in the past is that we wouldn't pick but, you know, 12 or 15, and then we'll run out of names, then we gotta do it over again. So it's just better to go ahead and go through the list. We've got plenty of names there, and surely we can find, you know, the number we need in case there's a.
These are, these are people who've served on the grand jury?
Yes, sir. I think so.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number four is approve the following job description.
Move approval A and B.
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number five is approval of declaration of intent to commit funding from the local provider participation fund for the comprehensive hospital increase reimbursement program sure of year four to support the upcoming IGT request.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number six is approval requested to replace unit number 122, 2009 Tahoe fleet vehicle reassigned to administration building with Florida Explorer not to exceed 39,600. Cost includes vehicle registration, wind attending, and decals.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number seven is approval requested to order four replacement trucks for Road and Bridge Department for fiscal year 2025 estimated $225,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number eight is approval requested purchasing department declare a list of surplus property as salvage in accordance with Local Government Code 263.152 and authorize destruction or other means of disposal.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number nine is approval of amendment number one to contract 24-071R seal code with Clark Construction of Texas to add five working days to the schedule.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 10 is approval of master service contract CIP 24-502 multiple audio and visual, visual system upgrades with Avonex in the following amounts.
Move approval A, B, and C.
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 11 is award of RFP number CIP 24-613 Blue Ridge Retaining Wall recommended award Norman Construction Services LLC.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 12 is award of RFP CIP 24-614 Brazos County Bridge Road, our scour repaired recommended award is solid bridge construction.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 13 is approval of the following committees for RFP CIP 24-619 Tax Office and Agri Life Site Drainage Improvements.
Move approval A through F.
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 14 is approval of CIP 24-644 Harper's Ferry and Cricket Pass Road reconstruction materials testing with Dudley Engineering in the amount of $92,851.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 15 is consider and take action on Wilburn SUD utility permit to construct road board at 8244 McAllister Lane to provide water services sites located precinct four.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 16 is budget amendments FY 23, 24 budget amendments 32.01 through 32.04.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 17 is personnel change status.
Move approval. A and B.
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 18 is payment claims claim to be paid by Brazos County claim number 8202781 through claim number 8202923 and claim number 9201167 through claim number 9201226.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. We'll move down to number 21 is acknowledgement of FY 2023, 24 budget actuals by fund as of May 15, 2024, and an acknowledgement of FY 2023, 24 contingency budget actuals by fund as of May 15, 2024. Number 22 is juvenile director's report on detention population. Lyndon.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We have 36 juveniles in detention, 23 males, 13 females, and we have 39 on electronic monitor.
Thank you, Lyndon. 23 assurance report on inmate population. Chief.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Our population this morning is at 831, 699 males and 132 females, 41 on electronic monitoring. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. 24 is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics.
Judge, before we get to that, I wanted to just go back. I meant to ask this question, but I, if purchasing is here, the Blue Ridge retaining wall bid tabulation that we had, it had a, a number for one of the vendors that was 100, but then the total score was 91.
May I look at it with the Commissioner?
Certainly. Certainly. I was just, I had this understanding. Like I say, I was a little confused when I read that and I looked at it because the...
That's the completion time was 100 days.
Okay. That's not part of the tabulation that gets you to the number of 91. That is the actual number of days, so that wasn't a score.
Correct. That is the completion time, or that number is used to figure into the points allowed per time.
Gotcha.
So that's where that...
Okay. Well, yeah, I was just, you know, when I looked at that 100 and I'm looking at bids that are added up here, that was, that was a little confusing to me.
I apologize. That 100 is the time that the vendor submitted to complete that project, and so that 100 days is figured in relation to the other times to calculate the points that they are allocated for time.
I just didn't read the, the, the number. I didn't, I didn't catch on the completion time or raw number being a part of it. I just looked for the column itself. So thank you for clarifying that point.
No problem at all. Thank you.
Okay. Any other announcement or of interest items?
Republican primary runoff is going on now, early voting, and you can check Brazos votes to get the locations, and voting day is next Tuesday.
And my suggestion would be is to vote early because the election day is actually the Tuesday after Memorial Day holiday. So unless you want to come back from the lake or the beach or whatever. But I wanted to talk about one particular thing. Yesterday in the Intergovernmental Committee meeting, we had a great presentation from the Health District. And in fact, it was so good that the Intergovernmental Committee requested that for our next meeting that they come back and we follow up more on learning about the services because this is not the same Health District that we had five years ago, not nearly the same Health District that we had. So I just wanted to tell them thank you, and I was, I was very pleased to get that response from the participants at the Intergovernmental Committee. And then, never forget, Garden is having its ceremony here today. I hope we have a short executive session so we can all get to that, but if you care to go, it's a really, it's gonna be a wonderful ceremony for an addition to Veterans Park. We have participated as a party to getting that to happen, and I think it'll be a very wonderful addition. Hopefully we'll have a good turnout there. Please, please come and join at Veterans Park at 11 o'clock if you can.
Okay. Any other announcement of interest items or possible future agenda topics? Hearing none, we will go back up to number 19 and convene an executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.2. to Texas Government Code 551.071 to consult with an attorney about pending or contemplated litigation and our settlement offer. And, sir, Commissioner's Court, Cheryl.
Does a vote, does a voter? We need to vote on this one?
No, no, I'm sorry, no.
Nope. You stood up, so I thought maybe that was what we were going.
Allison and I and Ed.
As far as I know, that's really all we need in there, so.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Okay. Coming out of executive session, it's 10:49.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the judge to negotiate with other governmental agencies and a law firm pursuant to water permit.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Next item is to adjourn.